Good evening. Good evening, this is the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals Business Meeting for September the 10th, 2019. About seven minutes after seven. What do we have for new business?
First thing is we have nominations for chairman. Chairman, Chairperson.
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, the Board of Appeals is going to conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the administrative assistant at this meeting. This meeting is being taped recorded for purposes of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over.
Okay, so do I hear any nominations for chairperson?
I'm gonna nominate Jeffrey Moore for chairperson.
Second? Uh, women, any further nominations for anyone else?
Anyone? Anyone?
Okay, and you actually technically don't have to vote.
We don't even need to vote.
You don't even need to vote, it's just an exception.
Okay.
And Jeff Moore, do you accept? Ooh.
Let's stick with elections.
Yeah, well, I'll accept, but I mean, I'd really like...
Yeah.
The, at least several members of the board I know are super busy right now with things going on and with their work and everything else. And it does take a lot of outside time, so I've been chairman a number of times now and I'm happy to help where I can, but I'm gonna need some help with a lot of the other aspects of being chair. And I'll call on everybody else to do that. If you guys are all willing to sort of pitch in wherever and however we can administratively or whatever, whatever needs to be done.
Yep. Yeah, go on record, absolutely.
You know what I mean? Help with the decisions, helping with motions, helping with all that stuff.
Yeah, motions.
So with that being said, I'm happy to accept it, but everybody can expect to get tagged here and there or wherever.
Yeah, you got it.
If you guys are willing to do that.
Absolutely.
And you are anyway, it's not like you haven't been, I'm just kinda saying it may be a little more of a team effort than it has been.
Like maybe writing some motions would help.
It's the only, absolutely, yep.
The board has to do those anyway, and I've kinda been doing them and now I don't have time.
Are there things that we should ask the town for in terms of do we not have enough support?
Well, I guess the other thing is we're probably due to get some members. There is one gentleman who was actually expressing an interest, I need to follow up with him. We've been really busy in summer vacations or anything going on, who was interested and if anybody else out there would be interested in being on the board, I think we have. What do we have for spots at least?
Staves, staves and another.
So there's two open, I think, right?
Yeah.
Would that help as chair though? I mean, do you want to say chair?
Well, it would help get more people in that may be interested. I mean, you guys have been around for a while and I know it's not something that you're interested in for, you know, whatever reasons and that's fine. But if we have open seats and somebody is interested in coming on for a year or two and maybe it's something that they'd be interested in taking by the reins, so.
I have a friend who always asks, so I'll reach out to her as well.
Yeah, be good. I mean, I think the more interested people we have, even as alternates, is really helpful. Alternates are only a one-year position for anybody out there listening and then the regulars are a five-year spot, but sometimes you can fill in as a regular and take the last year or two of somebody's spot that opens up, so it doesn't have to be... I think, I know a lot of people in town get a little scared off when they see a board position with a five-year commitment. So it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be a five-year commitment, so necessarily. Oh, anyway, alright, so I'll accept.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll accept that.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Now, we gotta move over?
Yep.
Switch names, please.
I'm gonna be Sean for the night. Alright Patty, so the next order of business is finance update. Wanna take it away?
Okay, sure. Um, under your new business sheet, under the agenda is the printout from... So we gotta reconcile fiscal '19, which we, I don't usually do till the middle to end of July, so that is the printout for the revolving account there from Mary, the town accountant. Eighteen four eighty twenty-four, so that's... And that's her sheet. My spreadsheet that I do myself is underneath that and we balanced just fine. And so that's, yeah, I know, that's the number. And so the amount spent to date for fiscal '19 was three thousand four sixty-five twenty-six and we took in seven thousand.
How does that compare to last year? Are we up a lot?
That is last year now, but the year before?
Yeah.
The last two years, we've been up a lot because of the...
Okay.
The thirty-four East Main Street and all the commercial stuff. That's what cost the money, that's what, you know, accessory apartments, two hundred, two fifty.
Yep.
So that's like you get one water resource, it's eight hundred, that makes it so different on the hearings. So the next one is the fiscal '20 spreadsheet, but I just carry that, so I'm just, we're just carrying that over, we're not getting any more money from the town or anything like that. And these, this starts July one of '19 and goes to six thirty of '20. So the first entry here is revolving, I was ending from seven thirteen. And then look for the deposit for the tonight's hearing, that's fourteen fifty. And then the second hearing tonight and then the next hearing that we have scheduled for October. So that already brings us this year, just from July first, nineteen fifty in fees. Um, the, yeah. The expense count is, as you know, it's two hundred and twenty. Then we go to revolving. This is a warrant for WB Mason to, I need a motion for that, and if you can all sign that, I'm passing that on.
I hear a motion for payment to WB Mason for supplies. The amount of two nineteen thirteen to the account of...
You can just say ending in forty.
Yeah. Five four, account ending in five four two zero zero zero. Thank you Gina.
Second.
Thanks Sean, okay. Any discussion on this? This was basically for miscellaneous office supplies, correct Patty?
Yeah, it's what I get every September, the calendar, two calendars and...
And so on and so forth.
I got as close to two twenty as I could.
Okay, it's a little larger than the typical office supply bill, but it's a beginning of the year thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other?
You must be very excited.
Thrilled.
Did you get your new recorder?
No, it, um, they, so they switched the computer over and the license worked.
Good.
And so...
Cool, didn't have to buy that.
Yeah, that's like that hundred dollars right there, so.
Okay, so...
Let's just see what happens after this meeting if it works.
Any other discussion on that?
Nope.
Nope, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none?
Sign this?
Three other ones in here Patty? That's it, right? It's the only warrant we have for tonight? Okay, we need to approve the minutes of July ninth, 2019. Who is here for that?
Everybody but Gina and Dave Capnis.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve the minutes, meeting minutes of July ninth, 2019?
So moved.
Thank you Paul.
Second.
Sean. Um, any discussion on that? None, hearing none, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none.
I abstained.
Gina abstained. Now we're on to the 2020 schedule for hearing dates for the ZBA. You've got a nice...
Yeah, so the holidays are in red, the hearing dates are in blue. Um, it's leap year, just so you know. And then, so March third, we can't do that first Tuesday, that's the primary election. And then the other dates look clear, except when we get to July fourth, just look at that, it's a Saturday and it's in between weeks. But if I move it to the fourteenth, it's only two weeks to the August hearing and that, well, yeah, that's only two weeks and that's, if there's legal ad, I need more time than that, so it's...
You're proposing the seventh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I think the...
I think everybody might...
The official holiday will probably be on Friday the third, I would imagine.
Right, that's what I put, and Town Hall will more than likely be closed on the second, that's up to the town administrator, so. And then we skip to...
September first is good. We often skip August, but it seems, so the earlier date in September is fine and that gives us...
Yeah.
Ahead of the long weekend is good, I think.
Right, and Labor Day is the, it's not stuck in the middle this time. And then, um, the only other one that there's a, there'll be a second Tuesday was of course the, it was Election Day, is November third.
Alright, so we'll meet on the tenth.
Yeah, we have to move that.
Does anybody looking at their schedules have any issue with any of these dates?
November might be tricky for me, but I won't put this far in advance.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be probably the second Tuesday right now. Keep in mind, we can change any of these dates as things come up.
Yeah, we can move these as long as no one's posted. I've already posted it up to...
So we don't have to approve the schedule Patty, but...
Nope.
Sounds like this looks good, so...
Yeah.
Stand to go with that. And we got some correspondence here?
And it's a denial letter for tonight's two oh six West Main from Les. And oops, I gave you the hearing notice for the next hearing instead of the denial letter. It's just a, it's an accessory apartment. That's what's in the packet that's under your agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
For next month.
Yes, for October eighth. Um, this is just a, this is from the town clerk. This is, everything that goes to town meeting, Springtown meeting, goes to the AG's office, Attorney General's office for review and if they needed to change anything, so she emailed that, I printed it out, and that's as far as we go. The second page is building height. That was, um, that was changed as far as, um, anything that we might touch. And then the one on like...
Alright, back up one.
Yep.
Uh, I missed it Patty, I'm sorry, which?
The building height, the AG's office, so go to the third page, third, second, third, building height, yeah.
Oh, here we go, okay, I was looking at page one.
So those were approved by the Attorney General, that's all. So that like, they don't take effect right after town meeting, you have to wait till the Attorney General says, okay.
The Attorney General of the state is... They approving the...
They're making sure we didn't do anything wrong.
They're approving our, okay, I thought they were making a change.
Oh no.
Were there changes to the, substantive changes to the bylaw?
The planning board made changes to the definition under building, it used to be building and it had the thirty-five feet, but when you looked under building height, the thirty-five feet wasn't there, it was under building. So they kind of incorporated it, they didn't actually put thirty-five feet, but they, if you read building height, it gives you the average disturbed existing natural grade stuff.
So they modified...
So it's now under building height.
Definition of building height and deleted it under building.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
How to data our Blue Books?
The Blue Books are from 2011. So you probably have, I've given out multiple...
Is it possible you can update a copy?
Yeah, could we get an updated copy of the bylaw?
Ask the town planner.
Alright. I need one.
I mean, yeah, it's... Why can't we ask the town planner? Because we're volunteers and we should be, have everything up to date, it shouldn't be difficult for us.
And coffee.
Donuts.
Yeah. Sprinkles.
Yeah.
He's put on the website, if you go on the town website and click on E-code and you go to chapter one sixty-five, the Blue Book, um, he has a bunch of amendments in there before you even get to the zoning code. You have some that I gave you inserts from like fourteen, two thousand fifteen.
We do have, we do have changes. The easiest thing is to actually take it out of that and put it in a binder and then we can replace pages. But the problem is the pages don't always line up, so they make a thing and then page two, it goes to, you, this is what the problem that I've seen is you can't just take page twenty-two out and it changes, you gotta do the whole thing, so...
Right, because page twenty-two becomes page twenty-two and twenty-three or something like that.
Yeah, and twenty-three, you still need half of the old one and then it...
It's a mess.
How many changes have been made since 2011?
A bunch.
A lot.
Oh, okay.
A lot. I got pages stuck in here that would replace them.
Yeah, my, one on my desk has just, it's just...
Well, why don't, uh...
People have used it and I'm missing some.
Does he have the whole bylaw in its current form available in a PDF online, do you know? Alright, so then we...
Not everything, I don't think everything's even online yet.
Alright, so...
I, I have to.
I'll try to shoot an email to John, but can you T M up and just say that this, that we discussed this in our meeting and our, our versions of the bylaw are getting pretty old and is there any way that we could get one?
Because I know they put the like this...
Kicks it back to you to do it.
Yeah, because we were looking for something and someone was looking for solar and the solar was even missing and...
I don't...
Alright, I'll do that.
Never used.
Okay. And the other thing is informational, the last piece of correspondence from the Black Swan meeting.
Yeah, I saw that, it was, uh...
I sent that to Thea Butter that was interested in it.
Les satisfied with this?
Yep.
Okay.
He was just going to check with the water department and that was it.
I did read where they, the location that they, there was some question about the location, but in their report that they indicated there was a map of where they actually took the place.
So that's a second set and I sent it off to Thea Butter and I haven't heard anything.
So we have a new application that you distributed for, I can't even see... I don't have the address on there, but...
Oh no, here's yours Jeff. There's three, uh...
Oh, that was...
Just sign in?
That's right, I don't need this tonight.
He signed and agreed that sheet and you know why, it went like that.
Five Davis Lane.
Yeah, that's how it is?
Yeah.
Everybody get it?
Yep.
Alright, are there any items that would not be reasonably anticipated by the freshly minted chair at this point in the time of discussion?
Can, do we have, we have a couple minutes if I ask something. Question on the accessory use bylaw. When we come for an accessory use or when an applicant comes for an accessory use, they...
Accessory apartment, Marsha.
Yes.
Okay.
They apply to have, to build it and building will say no, and then you need a special permit. However, when that accessory apartment is already built and approved, when it changes hands, it expires.
Correct.
Is the rule that they must still apply for a permit because, or are they just applying for a certificate of occupancy? Because it's already built, they're not building anything.
Um, they have to apply for a new special permit, it's usually written in the decision. And some of the really old ones, Patty, you can correct me if I'm wrong, aren't as clear.
The nineteen ninety-five one that's, what they did was the building inspector in ninety-five wrote conversion of single to multi-family, but on the application...
It doesn't, this is a...
You're talking about procedurally.
It's an accessory.
You know that you need a new one, what do they do?
Yeah, exactly.
So they would go to see Patty and say, I need a special permit, I am buying this house, right, complaining buying this house and I'd like to renew the special permit for the, um...
And Patty said you have to go to Les and ask for a building permit and then he's gonna deny it and then he's gonna say you gotta go get a building per, you gotta go to get a special permit. My question is, why do we need to do that?
Because Les is the zoning enforcement officer in addition to the...
But it's already approved and they don't, they're not building anything, so are they applying for a...
If he's a zoning enforcement officer, so he's the one responsible for enforcing the zoning. And the zoning, in this case, the, in the case that you're suggesting, the zoning element is that the special permit is expiring on transfer of title.
Correct.
So he's the one that would have to say this to Patty, I think.
Why couldn't they say, we would like it transferred to us and make it a lot easier?
They probably could, they still have to come to have a hearing.
For sure, but I don't think they should have to go apply for a permit when they're not even building. They should, are they applying for the certificate of occupancy, a new certificate of occupancy? I just need to understand it.
Yeah, I don't know, we should ask that of Les.
Because it's not, if you look at the bylaw, it specifically says you have to apply for the permit.
How else would we know about it? How else would we be informed that we needed, that there was a transfer of ownership?
Well, we wouldn't be.
That's, that would be my only concern, as long as that, that loop was, I'm not opposed to them not doing a building permit, but we need a way to be aware that there's a transfer...
But it's also really difficult for a new homeowner, why should they apply for a building permit when it's already built?
I'm not disagreeing with that, when I'm such a...
But so my point is, it's if we make it easier, more people are apt to come in and get a new one.
I don't think they have to apply for a building permit.
That's what it says in the bylaw.
Is that what it says?
Well, when they apply for a zoning application, they have to fill out a building application.
Yeah, each department has to sign off and that's going, you're right, I think you're right.
There's not something specific in the bylaw about an existing accessory and renewing the ownership.
Correct, correct.
So maybe we need a new bylaw.
Where does it say they have to apply for a building permit?
Under the, when you're applying for an accessory apartment.
So what would you want them to do instead?
My feeling is they should be able to just to come to us and get a finding to transfer the, the ownership from the previous owners.
Does anyone go from directly to us without the special, yeah.
Right.
I think, and Les can, Les can answer this pretty easily, so, and he's very approachable, so I would suggest if you give him a call and talk to him about it and then, you know, circle back with Patty and see if we can get him to do that.
So he would essentially be applying for a special permit and that would kick off...
You just apply for your special permit renewal.
Renewal under new ownership.
It makes sense to me, you're, I mean, they're not building anything.
No.
Well, they could be in some certain, some certain senses, they might be, that's different.
So unless they are, then that's different, but if they're just moving into the existing...
I think the reason why she's asking this is, should it be a change in ownership or change of residence, the owner's special permit and certificate of occupancy for the accessory apartment shall become null and void.
So maybe they're just applying for the certificate of occupancy.
Which the building inspector has to approve anyway. And he's also the zoning enforcement officer, which means he's the one who's gonna look at the code and the permit to see what needs to be done in order to renew the special permit, even if it doesn't involve construction.
I just feel like it should be easier, so who knew homeowners would come in.
It may, in fact, it may be easier than you think if you ask him.
Alright, so I'll just talk to Les when he's back from vacation.
And if you want me to talk to him, I'm happy to do it too, but if you wanna circle back with him or email him and copy me on it so when he replies, then we can verify. It's a good question, because it doesn't come up frankly often as often as it should.
Well, and, there's just probably a lot of people that come back and get them.
Yeah, that's true.
But if I'm representing them, I will be. So I wanna make it easy.
Well, they do wanna do it, because they don't wanna have issues down the road.
Right.
Okay, um...
That's all I have.
So we can't start the hearing, is it seven thirty yet?
No, but we, we need to close.
Yeah, do I have a motion to close?
When you're ready.
Yeah, move to close business meeting for the ZBA of September tenth, 2019.
I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you Gina. Any discussion on that? We're good to go?
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I wasn't looking up. Came from over there.
What are you, women?
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Alright, the meeting is closed, we can get into the first hearing in just a moment.
Um, three Hardy would be shorter, I think.
Yep.
Yeah.
First, before we do that, we want to open continue only, both of these.
You guys are Hardy terraces.
You wanna do that question?
Yeah.
You can share, we might have to, because I already have this one.
Alright, so these are both just, I'm gonna read these into the record. Okay, this is correspondence of September fourth. Sharon, you ready?
Pardon me, sorry.
Dear Board Members, as a follow-up to my letter of August fourteenth, given the anticipated planning board filing and the planning board's hearing schedule on behalf of the applicant G. Mellow Disposal Corp., I request that the hearing on the above referenced matter be continued to the board's meeting of November fifth, 2019, at which time we anticipate that the complete site plan application will have been submitted and will be under review by the planning board. Thank you for your consideration, very truly yours, Nancy S. McGann, attorney for G. Mellow Corp. And I forgot to mention, this was regarding the G. Mellow disposal Carlton Drive Water Resource District application, which I neglected to mention. Uh, so they're asking to continue this until November fifth. I need a motion to continue the hearing.
Yeah, I'd like to move to continue the hearing for G. Mellow Disposal Corp. relative to the Water Resource District for Carlton Drive to November fifth.
So moved.
He's moving.
He's moving.
Second, second.
Okay, any discussion on that one?
Two motions?
Have to vote on that?
An extension of time?
Extension, uh, extension of time for...
This is something different.
We have to vote on the motion.
I do, I'm not done yet, you're right. It's okay, I just wanna make sure this is, this is separate. Okay, um, this needs to be continued because we cannot make a decision on the water resource until site plan is complete, so we can have the hearing, but we can't make a decision. So she's pushing out that, our review of that until site plan is done, that's basically what's pushing this on. So, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. So that is continued to November fifth. This is an extension of time form, right?
Yes.
Alright, that was for the one we just voted on.
That's the final action, can I just get a motion for final action to December thirty-first, 2019?
Somebody so moved that?
For Carlton Drive.
So moved.
Let me read this. This was an extension of time necessary for the ward to take final action, including the final decision, yeah, because we have to take final action on the whole application. She's pushing the, it's going to December thirty-first, because we keep pushing this one out, it's a defective change, so I'm gonna give that to you.
Second, anybody have a second?
Second.
Sorry. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, that carries. Okay, so dated September fourth, to the Georgetown Board of Appeals regarding two oh three East Main Street, again, G. Mellow Corp. As a follow-up to my letter dated August fourteenth, on behalf of applicant G. Mellow Disposal Corp., I hereby request a continuance of the pending two oh three East Main Street hearing to the board's meeting of November fifth, 2019. In the event that there is an issue with the quorum, a board member is able to act on the two oh three East Main Street application due to the continuance, the applicant understands that the risk is borne by the applicant, thank you for your consideration, again, Nancy S. McGann, attorney for G. Mellow Disposal Corp. This is the continuation of the two oh three East Main Street site, which has not been withdrawn, but has been...
The existing transfer.
The existing transfer station, right?
You know what, you can probably do that in one motion, because when you go to the extension page, it mentions both.
Um, I'm also gonna sign an extension of time for the hearing to December thirty-first, for final action on that hearing until December thirty-first, 2019, okay? So Sean, if you'd be so kind to make a similar motion?
Yeah, move to continue G. Mellow Disposal Corp.'s two oh three East Main Street existing[1676.62] Move to, uh, continue, uh, G Mellow Disposal Corp.'s two oh three East Main Street, existing site to November fifth, and for final action to December thirty first, twenty nineteen.
Perfect, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed, none. Sorry, I forgot to ask for a discussion.
Get to sign both of those?
Oh.
Since I wasn't part of that meeting, should I abstain?
That hearing, um, yes.
Yeah, Gina has to abstain.
Thank you, Nina.
Is David that one?
Dave?
He was.
So we'll need, we'll need him.
Okay.
Yeah.
There we go.
And I'm just looking for the red folder for the warrant.
We're getting there. May I ask you to read something for me? You got, okay. Alright, so at this time, it's about seven thirty-five, and I'd like to, uh, open the hearing for, uh, three Hardy Terrace, and I see the applicant is here, so, uh, let's start with the legal ad. So Sean, if you wouldn't mind.
Good thing. It's a legal notice, Town of Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals for Three Hardy Terrace. A public hearing will be held on September the tenth, twenty nineteen, at seven thirty PM at the Georgetown Town Hall, third floor meeting room, for the application filed by owner applicant Steven J. and Karen A. Is it, is it Wade? Wade of Three Hardy Terrace, Georgetown, Massachusetts, located in the RC District and identified on assessor's map, one lot six. Applicants are requesting to rebuild a pre-existing non-conforming structure. It was damaged by fire, including the addition of a second floor and utilizing the existing footprint. The proposed modifications require a finding, special permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section six and nine, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter one sixty-five, Sections eight, nine, seventy-four, seventy-nine, eighty-nine, and ninety-four, also found on the website for Massachusetts Newspaper Publishers Association, masspublicationnotices.org, ZBA file FY twenty dash oh-three. It was ad number one three eight one nine zero nine four, and it showed in the Record Citizen on eight-two and eight-nine of twenty nineteen.
Thank you. Alright, welcome. Uh, let me introduce the board members for you first. This is Sharon Freeman. Gina Tebow.
Hi.
Paul Schillen.
Aye.
Sean Dean, um, the chairman, Jeff Moreroyal, gonna be acting as regular members tonight. Um, Sharon is technically a alternate, but she's filling in tonight, so we appreciate that. And you've all met Patty.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm sure.
Hi, guys.
So, um, we've all got copies of your application, read through it, so if you wanna give us a little rundown on where you are and why you're here, and then we'll go from there, okay? If you wanna introduce yourselves, I guess that was the place to start.
Uh, I'm John Kroll from Deer Hill Architects. I did the plans, I mean, for the Waits. Um, this is, of course, the existing structure. It's a standard split level house. Um, they had a fire that pretty well got in the house. And what they want to do is rebuild this, but with another story on top of it. Um, the reason that we're here, I don't know if you can all see this from any angle, but, um, is that the existing house is non-conforming in relation to this side lot line. It's thirty-two feet away when I believe they required it. My understanding is that by right, they could rebuild exactly the same home without even coming for a special permit. But basically, we're coming for the special permit because we're hoping to put another level on top. So the footprint of the house itself will not change. There is, I should have noted, right now, there's a large overhang over the front of the house that I believe is about five feet deep. So we'll be cutting that off so that the front of the house will technically be five feet further away from the street than it was. Not really an issue, because it is conforming at the front of the house anyway. But I did wanna mention that, because we are adding back in a front portico. But it is within those five feet that the overhang is being moved from, so it's no closer to the street than it originally was. By the definition of the bylaws, this does qualify as basement, and therefore, the existing is a first story and a one-story home. So basically, what we're talking about doing is adding another story above that. Um, again, we'll maintain the same footprint with the exception that the existing deck is ten feet away from the end of the house. We'd like to bring it out to the end of the house. So the only thing we're changing about the footprint is that the deck is getting closer to the setback than it actually is now. In fact, right now, it's not within the setback. We're asking to extend the deck to within the setback. And then to add on a second floor in the same footprint, um, and which, of course, part of that is in the setback, because the existing footprint is in the setback.
So the rear deck is getting smaller.
The rear deck is getting larger.
It is getting larger, okay.
Yes. Happens to be getting larger in both directions, but only one direction affects the.
Got it.
Setback.
It's the front, the front roof is the one that's getting smaller.
No, yes.
Yeah, the overhang.
The overhang, yeah.
The overhang.
I can go through the floor, floor plan, I'm not sure if that's relevant to you people or not.
If it's not a covered porch, does, do the setbacks apply?
If it's an entrance, I believe the setbacks don't apply. That's why Les, uh, noted, and it, it's worth noting, 'cause you're talking about the fronts, right?
No, I'm talking about the deck. 'Cause it's, I'm assuming it's uncovered.
The, the back deck will. It, it applies, yeah.
It's uncovered.
Yeah, it's a permanent structure.
Yeah, oh, it applies. I think front step, entry steps or something may, might not, but that, it does comply. Uh, keep going if you, if you don't mind, though. You can maybe just give us an overview of just what the, what the addition entails and what it includes, briefly, it'll be fine, and.
Okay. Right now, as the standard split level, half of the first floor is living area and half is bedroom. Uh, we're moving all the bedrooms upstairs. Uh, we're keeping the same number of bedrooms, it's downstairs now, three, um, but obviously giving them a dramatically larger master bedroom suite and such, and each of the kids' bedrooms are larger. The, we've tried, just by the nature of the building, that it's a, it's already visually a one and a half story building. Uh, we looked at a lot of different plans that, that had complete second stories up on top of them. We felt that they were a little bit too big for the neighborhood. So we, we came up with this plan that basically turns it in theory into a cape with some large dormers on the front, um, that, that provide almost full headroom for a second story. The, the dormer is basically, I'm sorry, the dormer is basically give the space for, okay, in this case, the front is out here. Yes, the dormer is equal the size of the bedrooms, and then the space you see between is the, is the slope of the stairway going up.
You're getting headroom in the bedrooms there.
Exactly. And there is also a full dormer, or almost a full dormer off the back, a full shed dormer, which makes the second floor almost the full length again in the back. So basically, it's a matter of shifting the bedrooms upstairs, making them larger, and increasing the living area on the main floor.
I particularly like using dormers, 'cause it keeps the peak lower, but still gives you headroom. Instead of doing a whole other floor with an attic or something like that, you can kinda keep things lower, but get the headroom you need up top, so it's either way. I'll get some questions from the board in a minute. Patty, is there any correspondence on this that was not included in the packet? For the benefit of the audience, well, we can get comments from the audience if anyone's here. Um, there were a number of letters of support, uh, in the package, and everybody's got those. So, um, just so everyone's aware, if you're here for this hearing, um, the board did receive the various letters that several of you submitted, and that's part of the application.
The ones in the application.
Okay, so there's nothing additional?
No.
Okay. And I'd like to make one point, and then we'll move to, um, the audience, if there's anybody that wants to say. The RC, this is RC zone. Um, the front setback requirements in RC are fifty, not forty. So it doesn't affect the fact that you need a special permit, because you're, you're non-compliant in the side setback, but also the front setback.
Okay.
And I, I just read the denial, and I think he missed that in the denial. But it's important to bring it up, so that if we make a decision, that it's captured.
Yep.
In the decision, because you actually have, I think, new, two nonconformities. The lot size is adequate, is there, is it a two-acre lot? Is that, is that correct? If there's any non, one of the things we need to do right off the bat is identify the nonconformities, so that we can explain why this is a pre-existing non-conforming.
It used to be our B zone. It would change, the zone changed.
Okay.
It's point nine acres.
Lot area is forty thousand, so it's slightly under.
Yeah, so it's a, it's non-conforming with regards to lot size, which is required, um, sorry, eighty thousand square feet in our, this is RC, right?
I believe so.
Yeah.
It is.
It's right down the street from me, so.
It changed from our B to RC in nineteen seventy.
Okay.
Which made it non-conforming.
I just wanna make sure we capture the existing nonconformities, so that the whole purpose of why you're here is not lost on the fact that something was missed. So it's, uh, non-conforming with regards to lot area. Let me just look at this real quick. Lot depth is okay. Frontage is, do you know what the frontage is?
Looks to be about a hundred and seventy-five feet.
Is it the thirty, thirty point nine three plus the one forty-five oh three?
Yes.
Which is, what is the total? You just need to do math quicker than I could.
One seventy-five point nine six.
Okay, where two hundred is required. And the front is required to be fifty feet, and you're forty point two, and that's not changing.
Correct.
Alright, and the side is forty, and it's also not, is that changing, or?
The, the closest corner of the house right now is thirty-two point zero. The, if the deck extends all the way, it would be thirty-one, one point nine feet. So it is getting a tenth of a foot closer, if the deck.
Alright, and that's because the side lot line is not perfectly parallel to the house.
Yep.
Yeah, got it. Okay. Alright, I don't know if you guys have any other, what's that?
They're all on that page all the same.
Are they, are they identified? I missed that, thank you, Patty.
On page three of the application, so the area and frontage.
Yeah, okay. What's not in there is the code, so, oh, actually, it is.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. It's in the application, so we can touch it. Good. Alright, um, do you guys have any other comments on that, questions? I'm gonna ask for audience participation, and then maybe we can follow up with questions after that. So if there's anyone in the audience that's here for this hearing, if you'd like to, uh, if you have any comments favorable or otherwise, is anybody here?
Nope.
No? Yeah.
Three Hardy Terrace.
If you wanna, uh, stand up and state your name, and you can sign in right at the podium there, if you don't mind, just jot your name down, and feel free to let us know what's on your mind.
Um, I'm Margaret Petorsky, my husband John, we're four Hardy Terrace, so we're right across the street. So we saw everything that they went through from the minute we heard a yell. And we feel for what they've been through, and as their neighbor across the street and as their friend, we are so supportive of what they want to do, and just to get them and their family back in their home. They've been through a ton since January. It's been a really long process. And, um, whatever we can do as their neighbor to support their moving forward and getting their new house built and moving back in, we're all for it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, Bob Lopes, I live at Six Hardy Terrace.
I missed his name.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Bob Lopes.
No, we gotta get you in the record.
Alright, uh, Robert Lopes, Six Hardy Terrace. Um, I live next to Margaret and John, and I guess diagonally to the Waits, and I support them to, uh, get back into our neighborhood, 'cause it's a great neighborhood, and they are a good part of it.
Alright, good. Okay, thank you.
I'm Ruth Mullin, Five Hardy Terrace, and I totally support it. They've done so much research. I, I get tired of looking at them.
You know, it's what we're gonna come to, right?
I have to break. They're such good neighbors, I want them to have this house.
Thank you, okay. Anybody else? Is there some audience? Okay. Um, I did, I live right around the corner as well. I'm not in the butter. Um, but I, I run by there all the time. I live on Andover Street, so I was also there at home the other night, your house caught on fire, and I go by there quite frequently, so fairly familiar with the site. Does the board have any questions at this point we wanna talk about? Design, uh, the footprint?
Well, obviously.
Nonconformity, the extension thereof or not thereof?
The design is great, in, in the way that the architect, um, made it appear to not be as tall as it, as that change would be, which I think is, is great, and that's an effort on their part, um, considering that there is a little bit, I mean, I think there is a little bit more of a, uh, an encroachment on the property line with the deck, but I can't see that that would have any substantial effect on anybody or anything, so I really don't have any issues with that. And I, again, I think they made an effort to make it look like it blended in with the neighborhood with the architectural changes that they made on the design. So that's, that's how I feel.
Paul. Anybody else? Comments? It, it sorta used to be that, again, by right, you could, you could, as long as you didn't go outside the footprint, people interpreted the code that you could by right rebuild on that, on that spot. Uh, if you went outside the footprint, the theory used to be, well, that was gonna require some sort of a variance, what have you. The, the laws have changed a bit over the years, and the board can make the decision as to what constitutes an increase in the nonconformity and what doesn't. And, uh, in this case, uh, you're reducing really some of the nonconformity in the front, by virtue of the, the roof, portion of that roof getting smaller, which I think more than makes up for the fact that you got a couple inches of the back corner of the deck, uh, which is technically getting slightly closer. So, to me, in total, you know, this is not increasing the nonconformity. There was, um, you know, there's other schools of thought that, you know, that being said, uh, if a piece of your house is, is non-conforming, and you wanted to go up three stories, you know, you could say, well, you know, you're adding significant amount of square feet in the non-conforming area closer to your neighbor, that kinda thing. I'm just kinda walking this through, because, you know, a lot of people come in and say, well, as long as I do this and that, it's not, it's up to the board, really, and every case is different. And I think, I, I echo what, what Paul said, that, you know, you've thought it through, you've, I think it's an upgrade aesthetically to the house, um, and, uh, you know, it's more efficient for, for living and everything else, so, uh, I think it's, it's good design, good application. I'm, uh, sorry you went through what you had to go through, but.
Thank you.
At the end, you know, you'd be happy to get back in, and it'll be an upgrade for you, so I guess, uh, some things happen for a reason, but, um, anyway, we do have to make a decision if we're gonna move forward on it, so, um, any, any other comments? Gina, nothing?
No, I am, I'm under the school of thought, if you go up, it's not increasing the nonconformity. We, we had a discussion.
I know, yeah. Talk to people in Marblehead, if somebody built a three-story and ruined their hearing, so, I'm just saying technically.
I guess in different situations, yes, but.
That's all I'm saying.
For the most part, I don't think you are. The deck maybe a little bit.
We need the mass land people.
Oh, yeah, great idea, okay. You're gonna have to do this, so.
We do have one member that fights me on that.
I'm gonna, just, just as a matter of procedure, gonna, Mr. Chairman, if I could read the.
Yes, thank you, Sean.
These exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, plot plan of land dated seven twelve nineteen, stamped by Richard J. Bartram, PLS of Byfield, Mass. Exhibit two, sheet, um, exhibit one, existing floor plans dated seven eleven nineteen by John Crowell of Deer Hill Architects. Exhibit three, sheet example two, existing elevations dated six eighteen of nineteen by Deer Hill Architects LLC. Exhibit four, sheet A one, proposed floor plans dated seven eleven of nineteen by Deer Hill Architects LLC. And lastly, exhibit five, sheet A two, proposed exterior elevations dated seven eleven by Deer Hill Architects LLC.
Stay with us for just a minute, we're gonna have to take a motion. Stay with us for just a couple minutes, you can get some writing. May I ask you, your plans are final, right?
Yes.
As far as.
The, the interior of the kitchen and stuff may change, the exterior is completely final.
Okay, and your elevations and so forth, you don't need to make any substantial changes at this point?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause one of the conditions, um, will be the day, we gotta be built per plans submitted with the application, substantially. Any substantial change to that would trigger a, you know, concern by the building inspector that you're not complying with the special permit, so you can't build, decide to build the deck off the other side or something like that, obviously.
Yep. Yep.
Sorry, sometimes you gotta do it, you know, on the fly here, so. Where do you guys live?
Longview.
Longview.
Oh, okay. Close by at least, if you stay in town.
Exactly.
You have kids, too, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I have an eight-year-old.
One eight-year-old son or a daughter?
Daughter.
Gonna get a new bedroom here, maybe.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay?
Please do.
Uh, I'd like to move that the board find that the proposed modifications related to Three Hardy Terrace, that those, um, modifications, the changes relative thereto and extensions and alterations, it's not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use of the neighborhood. I'd also, uh, ask the board to move, uh, to find that the proposed addition, um, meets the requirements of the Georgetown zoning bylaws, chapter one sixty-five dash seventy-nine, A through D, being that the application is more desirable to the public convenience or welfare, be that it's not going to overload any public water or other municipal services, so as, so as to unduly subject any area to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. It, it will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, and will not cause an excess of that particular use which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. Further, I'd like to ask that the board move to grant a special permit to Stephen and Karen Waite of Three Hardy Terrace, Georgetown, Mass., located in the RC District and identified on Assessor's Map. One, Lot six, to rebuild their pre-existing nonconforming structure that was damaged by fire and the addition of the second floor utilizing the existing footprint under Mass. General Laws, chapter forty-eight, section six and nine, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, chapter one sixty-five, sections eight, nine, seventy-four, dash seventy-nine, eighty-nine, and ninety-four, with the following conditions, that it will be built, uh, per plans submitted. And that they won't, uh, deviate from those substantially and, right, in any substantive way.
Okay. Thank you, go here a second on that.
Second.
Ladies before gentlemen, that was Gina. Discussion? For the discussion? Patty, I'd like to add to the record that the board found, um, that the pre-existing nonconforming use, that we identified the nonconformities of the, uh, there were three pre-existing nonconformities, one being, uh, frontage of, uh, one seventy-five point nine six feet where two hundred was required, uh, front yard setback of forty point two where fifty is required, and a side yard setback of thirty-two point one where forty feet is required. It's important to discuss that. Any other discussion? No? Take a roll call vote? Sharon?
Oh, yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes, so you have five in favor and zero opposed. You should have the best of luck with your construction, I do need to read you, um, this little blurb.
Second page.
Sorry? Can you find it, thank you. Do you have any write this?
No, I need to.
Per Mass. General Law, chapter forty-eight, section nine, special permits granted shall lapse within a specified period of time, not more than three years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or wait the termination of an appeal referred to in section seventeen, if a substantial use thereof or construction has not commenced unless upon timely application, this board finds good cause to extend such period. The zoning board also has fourteen days to file a decision. In any appeal, this decision shall be made pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-eight, section seventeen. Within twenty days after the date and notice of decision was filed with the town clerk, an applicant may file this decision before the twenty days, but does so at their own risk. So basically that means, if an appeal appeared at twenty days, any work you do is at your own risk, is you're subject to appeal.
Twenty days from the potential fourteen days that it takes to-
Filing, that's correct, and it will generally not take fourteen days to file, Patty's usually pretty good at getting these things in. I would say it's Tuesday, usually by the end of the weekend we have the, the, uh, decision drafted, because usually the board members have got to do that. And then Patty will generally get it.
Once I get them to sign it, I'll take it and get it stamped by the town clerk and I'll call whoever you want me to call.
It's generally more like seven days.
Then the twenty day, when that town clerk's stamped, then it's twenty days from now.
You have one more stamp.
Then you bring it back after that, after you go to the registry, Southern Essex Registry, I, I'll explain it all to you.
And if you think you're gonna extend construction beyond a few years, make sure you get back and see the building inspector. Knock yourselves out.
Thank you.
I have a motion to close the hearing for Three Hardy Terrace.
So move.
Thank you, Sean. Gina, always in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you.
I can write this one. I get it. Just give me, if you give me just a, a special permit template, I'll, I'll write it.
Yeah, that's, I just took a copy of the setbacks. And Jeff, you said, you said those were the, the identifying three nonconformities, were these?
Get your own name tag there. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
We're just gonna take a couple of minutes and get started. Supremes. Jeff, how are you?
You don't have an application?
I have.
Okay, we're back. The zoning board of appeals meeting for September tenth. And I'd like to do the points about eight, eight minutes after eight. I'd like to open up the hearing for two oh six West Main Street. I'll go ahead and introduce the members once again in case you guys weren't here. Chairman Freeman and Gina Tebow, Sheldon and Sean Dean are all acting regular members tonight. I'm the chairman, I'm Jeff Moore, and Patty Batari is our clerk. I'm sure you've met. And what I'd like to do is got to read the legal ad for the record. So Paul, you want to take it away on that one?
Sure. A public hearing will be held on September tenth, two thousand nineteen, at seven thirty at the Georgetown Town Hall. Third floor meeting. Do I have to read all that stuff?
Yep.
For an application, we're all here. An application filed by owner applicant Jeffrey M. Snyder of twenty-two Parish Road, Georgetown. For property located two oh six West Main Street, Georgetown, Mass. Oh one eight three three, in the RA district, and identified on assessors map, six B lot fifty-three. Current use at the property is a restaurant, has a restaurant as a legal pre-existing non-conforming use. The applicant is requesting a change of use for the redevelopment of an existing restaurant-type use to any one or combination of retail store, retail store and services, business offices, and workout gym. The uses proposed are prohibited in the RA district with the exception of the workout gym, which is not a listed use. The owner applicant requires a finding special permit from the zoning board pursuant to Mass. General Law forty-eight, section six and nine, and Georgetown zoning bylaw, chapter one sixty-five, sections eight, nine, seventy-four, dash seventy-nine, through seventy-nine, and ninety-four. Also, property requires a water resource special permit pursuant to bylaw, chapter one sixty-five, dash twenty-nine, and dash thirty-eight, Article five, specifically, section one sixty-five, dash thirty-two, B and D. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Paul. How are you guys?
Good.
Good. If you'd like to introduce yourselves and give us a little presentation on what's going on.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Attorney Christopher Alvin from Blatman, Bobrowski, and Haverty. To my left is the owner applicant, Jeffrey Snyder. And we have the engineer here at the table as well, Richard Williams. I also have co-counsel Paul Haverty behind you. I hope that that's not intimidating or off-putting that we have two lawyers here. We just happen to both work on this project and both wanted to be here tonight. So, Mr. Snyder bought this property that has always been used as a restaurant. I think the last restaurant was Tin Lizzie's, if you remember that. And he's had difficulty with this project because this property is very large, but he can't find a tenant that's just a restaurant. So it's a pre-existing legal non-conforming use, and now he's trying to find a way that this property can be useful. So the proposition is that the proposed uses would be retail business, business office, and a workout gym. He picked those uses because he has potential tenants that fit that category, and those uses are uses that we believe are less detrimental than a restaurant. Unfortunately, it's been difficult for him to find tenants to fit into this space without getting some relief from this board to get exactly what is legally allowed. So we're kind of here tonight to discuss the potential tenants that might move in, discuss the square footage that might be required for those different uses. In addition, because this is a water district resource, we need to get a special permit under section thirty-two. It's my understanding that the board won't address that until we get site plan approval. We also understand that we need to get site plan approval. But again, we want to get some direction from this board about the uses that are going to be allowed on this property before we move forward to the planning board. With the complete understanding that this board may not want to make a final decision until we're in front of the planning board to having discussions about site plan approval. So, that's our proposal. Trading a legal pre-existing non-conforming use, a restaurant, to a less detrimental to the neighborhood uses that this applicant can find tenants for. Mr. Snyder has brought a whole bunch of contingent of people from one serious tenant, and that is CrossFit Gym. The owner, Dennis, is here, as well as a lot of his staff and managers. They are looking for a new space to go in Georgetown. They are worried that their lease in Georgetown, I think down the street from here, may run out, right? May run out, and they are looking for a new space, so they're very serious about coming to this spot. And obviously, we need zoning relief in order to allow that type of use. So, we have the staff and the engineering department here to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. You want to go through the changes to the property, if there are any, what the proposed uses are, and...
I presently have, and my Ed Dick from Real Estate Company that's showing the property, has signed up, has shown the property to multiple people. We presently have three different companies that are interested in the property, but it's very difficult to get them to sign a letter of intent until we can get some answers from the town. And that's, like Chris said, that's one of the reasons we're here. CrossFit one thirty-three is down the street. I think they're in a sixty thousand square foot building. I'm told a marijuana company is trying to move into that property for the last year, year and a half. So I believe CrossFit one thirty-three is on a month-to-month lease, and he's hoping, obviously, he can stay in the community. They've been in the community, I think, for a few years now. He's eager to sign a lease with us, and we'd like to work a deal with him. The building itself is twelve thousand feet. The back half of the building is five thousand feet, if you've ever been over there. The back half, I don't think, has been occupied for many, many years. It used to be some type of theater, I was told, twenty years ago, twenty-plus years ago. It's more like a warehouse, and it's twenty-foot ceilings, it's like a big box. It's perfect for something like CrossFit one thirty-three. He saw the space, he likes it. I think it's a good fit, and it keeps that business in Georgetown community. The front half, little over half, is about seven thousand square feet, has been multiple restaurants. I've lived in Georgetown twenty-two years, and I can't count, but there has to be a half a dozen restaurants that have been in that building. And for some reason, they're not very successful. That's why we were thinking possibly entertaining other type retail spaces. We do have one restaurant that's somewhat interested in some of the space of the seven thousand. He's interested in five thousand feet, which means I would have to find a third tenant for the two thousand feet. We have a third person interested in all seven thousand feet, who we're also eager to try to do some business with. There are preschool slash daycare. We felt like the preschool daycare in the seven thousand feet and the CrossFit in the five thousand feet would be a good fit for the community. The hours are more daytime hours. There's nothing going on in the evenings. Both those businesses, I would think, closed relatively early, so you don't have the bar and the drinking and people leaving that area, so...
Of course, it goes without saying that our argument is that these other uses, these other possible uses, don't emit as much odor, noise, traffic, and light as the previous non-conforming use. So we think that this makes a lot of sense. We're redeveloping a property that hasn't been able to be used, that isn't conducive to a residential use, and is a more, less detrimental use than what was there before.
Will you need to make structural changes to the building? Entertains and things like that. You must need more than one door and things like that.
Right now, the building is split up into almost two spaces, and the back half has, it has a small thirty-six inch regular door for CrossFit. They would want to put in an overhead door on the backside, so the people working out might be able to run outside, run a mile, and come back to the property. But no, structurally, none. The restaurant, if it went to potentially a preschool daycare, it would all be inside. The old kitchen would come out, and they'd convert that into classrooms and things of that nature. What would happen on the outside is we would obviously want to clean up all the landscaping, make it look a lot more presentable, clean up the parking lot, and then the facade that faces the long side of the building and the street, we would clean that up and make it look like it belongs in the area and update it. But no, there would be no additions or structural work whatsoever.
You'd be bringing up everything. I know, because I was in there and there's no sprinkler system. You'd be adding sprinklers and...
So there's a sprinkler in the restaurant?
Yep.
We would make sure that that meets code. There is no sprinkler in the CrossFit. We would just add the sprinkler into the CrossFit.
All right, and then any of the other stuff, it would be brought up to date, obviously.
Yes.
Patty, is there any new correspondence on this? It's not in the application.
No, that's why I'm shocked to see.
And I'll get, I will get to the audience in a few minutes. I know there's a lot of people here. I don't know if you're interested in speaking, but we're going to get to you in just a couple of seconds. Now, why don't we go ahead and do that? You guys want to talk any further about...
Just one more thing. That the property's currently served by a septic system, and that septic system is good for, I think it's an eighty or an eighty-eight seat restaurant. There is a scenario where there are more seats than that, more flow than that. If we go above the amount of flow that's allotted for that restaurant use, there would be a new septic design. But it depends on what the uses, the final uses end up being. There may not need to be a new septic design, but like I said, should there be more flow than the eighty-seat restaurant, we will be putting in a new septic system.
Where is it, right now? Under the parking lot?
Under the parking lot.
And it would stay that way?
Correct.
Really, you wouldn't be able to tell, actually?
That's right.
Would it have to be raised?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that until the testing is done, if there was a new design. But my guess is that the groundwater table's down deep enough that it wouldn't need to be raised.
Why don't we go ahead and move to audience at this point? The guys, if you have other questions, kind of file those for a minute, and we'll see everybody else as they say. So I know there's a lot of people. Does anybody here like to speak to the board on this project? You can raise your hand, and we'll recognize you. Sure. Go ahead. You want to stand up, and actually, if you can sign in, that would be either before... Oh, you did. Perfect, thank you. Say your name and add...
My name is Mark Casper. I live at two oh seven West Main Street, so I'm directly across from that property. Been there over thirty-five years. Since the Giadano's left, I've seen a bunch of bars and clubs go in and out of there. The problem I don't see, and I'm not saying that'll happen here, I'm assuming, but he's a town resident, he'll be a good neighbor. A lot of these restaurant and bar owners came in after the Giadano's. Yeah, with the exception of, I guess, Mike, who ran the Lebanese restaurant. They were good neighbors. So that's what I think a lot of us look for as a good neighbor. Two problems I see right away. Both ideas are very good, daycare and the gym facility. My biggest problem is that, depending on what time, you have drop-offs in the morning. West Main Street can't, they hardly handle the traffic they have now going, coming into town. Trust me, there's many times that I want to come downtown, and I have to find a different route to get downtown between seven and eight-thirty in the morning. That's a huge concern, because again, it's overflowed as it is. I'm sure if you speak to the police department, they'll tell you the same thing. If you're trying to get, if God forbid, emergency personnel had to come from Groveland into Georgetown in the morning, they are stuck in traffic. It's just, that's my biggest concern. They're great ideas. You know, they really are, but that's a huge concern for me. I got to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Sure.
Hello, I'm Dennis Floyd. I'm the owner of CrossFit one thirty-three and Project Fifteen Fitness. Just wanted to say that I'm excited to hopefully work with Jeff, and hopefully that the outcome is good for us. Got a number of people in the gym who are, a lot of people here tonight in support. You know, you say, be a good neighbor. You know, our slogan is, "Your neighborhood, gym." So we hope to be good neighbors. And I just want to say we're super excited about the potential here, and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes?
Hi, my name is Katie Riley. I live on twenty Taylor Street, which would be across from the gym. I'm also a member of the gym. I think going for good neighbors, we're made up of community members, active community members. Our kids go to school here. We have firefighters of the community. We would be good neighbors. And I think that more so than if you have a breakfast restaurant or another restaurant, you have people coming out of town, coming in. We're here, we live here, we are driving around anyways. I think that the gym is a positive aspect of our community, and I'd like to make the statement.
Thank you.
Lisa Pur, two oh one West Main Street, and lived across from many bars over there. Wouldn't call them restaurants, really. And I would think that we would welcome a gym and a daycare compared to having people out there at one, two o'clock in the morning drinking. So I don't know what the restaurant is that might be interested in going there, but I think that personally, I would be supportive of the gym and the daycare compared to the use that it has been over there through the years, in my opinion.
What do you feel about retail space?
Yeah, it would depend on, I mean, is it twenty-four-seven retail, or...
Do you have hours that you were anticipating for retail?
We don't have anyone as far as if you're retail, like selling goods, right now lined up. I know CrossFit. I go to a CrossFit gym, unfortunately, it's not CrossFit one thirty-three only because my wife works at a CrossFit gym, a new report. But I do know that their classes, I think they have a five-thirty in the morning. Generally, all their classes, so this isn't like a gym, like Planet Fitness, that's open fourteen hours a day, and a thousand members can go. CrossFit's structured where they have multiple classes throughout the day, usually five-thirty in the morning, six-thirty in the morning. I think there's a nine-thirty, a twelve-thirty at lunchtime, and then in the evening, four-thirty, five-thirty, six-thirty. They usually come around eight-thirty at night. These classes have maybe thirty people working out at one time. And the reason it's structured that way is because it's instructional, there's trainers there. It's not like going to LA Fitness, where a thousand people show up. The classes are small. So hours of operation for the CrossFit gym would probably be about five-thirty in the morning until about eight-thirty in the evening.
But nothing, you don't have anything for retail?
No. And then the daycare, I don't, we don't know enough about it. But I mean, obviously, dropping off children, so people dropping off their children in the morning, they're picking up in the evening and heading home, and I assume the daycare is not open on the weekends. But this stuff is all preliminary. I don't have anything, it's hard to get people to sign up for a lease without knowing what we can put there.
Because you're, they're asking for retail use.
Retail stores and services, business offices, workout gym, and perhaps daycare, if that's something that they want to add, they want to consider, so...
I don't know if I should, I feel like I should disclose, I'm also a member of CrossFit one thirty-three. I don't have a personal vested interest, but not a financial interest.
Yeah, I guess, and if we're, so I guess I am too.
I don't know if I need to say that.
Well, let me just catch the audience before we get too far off. Is there anybody else in the audience that has anything they'd like to say at this point, that hasn't spoken yet? No? Everybody got their thoughts covered? If you do, something comes across your mind, just raise your hand, and if there's an opportunity it will come up, we'll try to address it. So one of the questions I have, and I spoke with Les about this briefly, and didn't, I didn't bring this up specifically, but as far as the gym goes, and it says it's a, it's not a use, it's in the bylaw, which is true, but there are other gyms in town, and have been other gyms in town in retail locations. So I couldn't quite understand from him why a workout facility is not considered retail. Because generally, they're in a retail plaza or so forth, and you kind of have the same concept going on here.
Right.
So, did you guys discuss that at all?
Yeah, sure. The one thing I would say is that in this analysis of under section, was it ninety-five, for a change in a pre-existing non-conforming use. It really isn't important how the use is categorized, because what you're just permitting is what you're permitting, is the use. So it's sort of irrelevant of how the use is actually categorized. It can be useful in determining whether something's going to be less detrimental, but ultimately, it's just a question of, is a gym less detrimental or not? And so whether the use is in the bylaw or not, we all know what specifically use we're talking about. So a judgment can be made. It doesn't necessarily need to be a listed use in the bylaw. Does that make sense?
It does, but can I just finish my one thought for a second?
I'm probably going to say the same thing you are. Go ahead.
Well, the issue is that retail uses are prohibited in the district. So the only, the reason they're here is because they have a pre-existing non-conforming restaurant. Under any other circumstances, everything they're asking for, except perhaps maybe a gym, if you can identify it someplace else, I don't know, it's not in here. But everything else they're asking for would require a use variance at this location. This is a residential location, zone residential. Not saying it's a bad idea, I'm just saying these are the facts. So you have a non-conforming use there, which is a restaurant, and they want to change that use. And so it's up to the board may, under section one sixty-five, ninety-four, change or alter a pre-existing non-conforming use, provided we make the finding that it's less, in this case, less non-conforming to the neighborhood. Which, to me, I had to go back and talk to Les about that, but I understand where he's coming from. If you have a non-conforming use, technically, we can change this entire non-conforming use to some other non-conforming use, to the extent that the board feels that it is better for the neighborhood, so to speak, less non-conforming. The only question I have, and so I'll let you pick up on your thought, is you're asking, you're distinguishing among some pretty specific things here. And if we're going to consider a special permit that captures what you're looking for, or part of what you're looking for perhaps, how is that, how is that permit, how is that authorized use going to be maintained going forward without somebody saying, well, yeah, general retail uses, and all of a sudden, it can be basically anything. You want business, you want retail, you want a gym, maybe daycare. I think some of those may be an excellent fit in this location. I think some of them, potentially, down the road might not. And so I just want to be careful how we look at this and craft the decision, because I'm not exactly sure what this could turn into down the road. It's not a plaza. I don't see a retail plaza going in, and that's kind of what this is starting to look like, unless we're really careful about what we do. That's all I'm getting at. And that's why I wanted to kind of question about specific uses. And we can say, hey, you can do a gym, you can do, you know, a daycare, you can do a specific, you know, doctor's office, maybe, or something, and we've done that in other places. Carlton Drive is an example, where every time they come in for a change of use, they have to come before us and say, yeah, archery is fine. I don't want to pick on them, but I mean, you know, they had special permits coming in there every time they wanted to change tenants. And that's what's going to happen potentially here, is every time you change a tenant, it's not one of the specific things you listed. And so, okay, I got to go back to the zoning, you know, because you want to change your tenant, you know, and tenants turn over all the time. So on the one hand, you want to be somewhat general. On the other hand, we have to be careful that we're not turning this into, you know, the plaza on Route ninety-seven, so...
I can tell you the two tenants that are into the CrossFit gym and the daycare, they both want to sign ten-year leases with two, five-year commitments after that. So something that's going to go in there, it's going to stay there for quite a while.
Right.
Our intentions are not to put something in and change every two years. And the restaurants that have been there, how many have been there in the last twenty years? Six, seven?
I can't.
Oh, yeah, there's no doubt. I mean, there may be a whole host of reasons.
So our goal is to, our goal is to put something there that's going to be great for the community.
Right. Gina, go ahead.
The retail, that's what I was, the retail's the one for the same reason you were saying. Like, if all of a sudden, it's a CVS, you know what I mean, or something like that. That's why I was asking, do you have specific hours when you're asking for the retail? Because I think if we were to grant a retail use, we need to grant it based on specific hours. That's all I'm saying. And how did the other gyms open up, out of curiosity?
I don't know, I didn't have the chance to ask Les about it. I know we used to have Curves, and there's something next to Crosby's. Is there a workout for women or something?
There was, there's a new gym right next to the spot, and there's also a yoga gym. And the other, I was just curious, only because if a workout gym is not in the use schedule, then...
Some of them may fall under, like there's a karate place, it may be education.
Private education.
Is it private education?
I think.
Sure. Yeah, go ahead. So you want to introduce yourself and...
When Dennis Floyd actually came to town to open his CrossFit studio, you guys actually granted him a special permit, a private educational lease.
Change his name and your address, Jim. I know you, but they don't.
Oh, so is that what we've put it under? I don't even remember.
Yeah, it was education.
Is it allowed to use by special permit in RA?
Yeah.
And actually, that makes more sense with CrossFit, anyway.
As far as the retail use goes, the board could certainly put in conditions to say, you know, a retail that's limited to a certain amount of hours. You know, you can put any conditions you want into a decision to try to conform with the change in the non-conforming use. I should add just one point, not to confuse the board, but the daycare is actually, you know, exempt from zoning in the residential district. So that necessarily, that wouldn't need a use variance if it wasn't allowed as a pre-existing non-conforming use. That technically could just be applied for, not just as is.
I was going to bring that up. I mean, the two tenants that you're considering seriously are the ones that you've, seems like you've got some, you know, some real teeth with. Are, one would be, could certainly be included in a special permit, but it would maybe be allowed by right. I'd have to look it up, but...
Right. The board can put conditions on it, but it is, it is allowed as right under the statute.
Sorry, while we're on it, I apologize. Where is it?
I see nursery school.
That's what we use for Penticat Workshop, which was a daycare.
And that requires a special permit?
We school. We use nursery school, because daycare is a thing.
So this is actually controlled by the statute. And Paul's better at daycares than I am, so he might be able to touch base on this.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to general laws, chapter forty-eight, section three, municipalities are not allowed to acquire special permits to daycares, and they have to be allowed in any zoning district within the town. They can be subject to reasonable regulations with regard to bulk and setbacks and parking and things of that nature.
How much section was that in?
Chapter forty-eight, section three.
Is there a difference between daycare and nursery school? As far as occupancy, how many kids is it? I mean, is there, I can go look it up, I just, I don't know.
I don't think so. Actually...
It's in our, nursery school's in our code.
The statute actually references childcare facility.
Right, okay.
So I'm not really sure what the difference between daycare and nursery school would be, other than perhaps there's some specific learning component associated with nursery rather than with the daycare.
So the daycare would be regulated in the bylaw and not under a special permit? It could, parts of, certain aspects of a daycare could be regulated under the bylaw?
They can be subject to reasonable restrictions, and that...
That's what I meant.
And then turns into really a very fact-specific question. It's not that you can say that all daycares have to have X amount of parking and this much setback. It really becomes a very site-specific question, looking at what the application is requesting and whether or not regulations that the municipality wants to impose are in fact reasonable for that particular application.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Would that, if there was daycare, would that, I would hope you have some sort of outdoor area for them?
They were, they asked us if we would be willing to put in a place where the children can play. On the backside of the building, there's a, I want to say it's a field, it's an open area. It's just overgrown grass. We would entertain, putting in some type of fenced-in area, and probably, I mean, mulch and some playpen-type stuff for children. So that is something they would be interested in doing, yes.
Somebody wanted to speak out there.
Oh, is this anybody else? Sure. Say your name, please.
Tom LaValle, two oh two West Main Street.
Hi, Tom.
Right next door. I was going to ask that same question about, you know, where would you put the playground and that sort of thing? So it seems to me they would have to go to the conservation committee to ask permission to do that, right? To, because if you take anything down or whatever, a hundred feet from the water, which is, would be, they would have to ask. I'm all for that. I think that would be great, have daycare there, and things we were talking about as well. And the gym, I think, would be wonderful there, other than what we had before, so... Because I've been there for thirteen years now, and we've had five different restaurants there, so... So it would be good to have somebody maybe more stable, and, but I am concerned too... So it would be good to have somebody maybe more stable and, but I am concerned too about what you stated about the traffic. I mean, the traffic sometimes in the morning, when I used to go to work in Salem and I would leave at six-thirty because if I didn't leave by then, I would never get out of Georgetown. And it's backed up all the way, you know, from the mobile station, all the way to our place. And so I certainly am concerned about that. But it seems to me that if they work something out with the daycare about when they drop off and, you know, and that sort of thing and pickup, that could alleviate that problem.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And the issues that will be addressed at, also at site plan approval.
Correct.
The only conservation thing I remember is when Coffee Doles, when they went to planning for site plan approval and they had to go to cons, they wanted to put seating outside and that was, it's right on the pond. And so they had a, something, I don't know what happened, but something, conservation was involved.
I thought they denied it.
Yeah, it was, that didn't happen.
So the area that potential, if there was some outdoor for the children or if some of the CrossFit members wanna do some exercise outside of it, it's nice weather, it's not within the pond. And there's actually, I don't have all the information in front of me, but a restaurant, several restaurants ago, I think it was Giadano's, they were thinking about trying to do weddings there at one time, that the CrossFit section we're talking about, that's more of a big box. They were gonna, that was something, gonna be some type of ballroom, which never happened. And they had these big plans of putting a gazebo and all kinds of different things and a patio outback. And they were supposed to do that and it never got done. And that was all within the distance of the building and not, not on the pond. So the area that we're talking about now, if the children are gonna be outdoors, would be in that area. It would not be infringing on the pond.
Is it a hundred feet, Rich? Is that right?
Yeah, a hundred foot.
There is space between the hundred-foot buffer zone and the building.
Yeah, but as long as they're outside a hundred feet, then this is sort of not an issue.
And just for the board's knowledge, we've had conversations with the conservation commission because there's an outstanding order of conditions on the property that we're looking to work on. It wasn't the fault of us. We bought the property subject to that order of conditions. So we look forward to working that, getting the compliance on that.
Don't people come and bring their boats in and out?
There's a public dock launch off the property. It's town property. If you're looking at the property and the buildings on your right-hand side, the launch is on the left-hand side. It's like a long, it actually looks like a residential driveway.
Can you, that camera's not working, so can you just tote that a little bit to that camera?
Mr. Chairman, someone in the back.
I know, it's hot for you guys to see, but that camera stopped working.
I was just gonna say that that's not town property, that is, belongs to the state.
State, alright, sorry.
Because I'm on Rock Pond Association and I was on the executive board and did a lot of research on all this stuff. And had to work very closely with the conservation committee on a lot of the work that we did on the pond. And, you know, fighting the mill foil and all that sort of thing. So we got the mill foil gone, but there, our conservation committee, you know, is concerned about that hundred feet. You know, even cutting a tree, you know, you have to get their permission.
Yeah, it's, it's understood. Thank you.
Are you, so at this point, you're just kind of sticking your toe in here, trying to find out what, how the board feels about different uses?
I'd love to walk out here and you tell me I can put CrossFit in the five thousand feet and the daycare could go in the seven thousand feet and I could sign two potential letters of intent with these people we can move forward to start getting the place operational by springtime.
Because it's, doesn't, it seems to me that those, neither one of those are, would be considered specifically retail at this point.
Correct. I think when we, when we pulled in the application, this has been a process, I feel like it's been over six months. We didn't have any tenants lined up. So we wanted, and I was told that another property down the street, on Main Street, on East Main Street, the Dunkin' Donuts. I'm told that's also a residential, non-conforming use and they have multiple things going on there. So our idea was to try to do maybe something sort of, a lot smaller building, but something similar, trying to get answers from the town so that we could actually go out and sign these leases. It's very difficult to get these potential clients or tenants to sign something when I can't tell them if they can be there.
No, of course, of course. You don't have to answer this. I mean, I understood that there was, there was a restaurant that was perhaps interested in, maybe you, they don't.
There is, there's a third, there's a third, there's a third party that, they own a restaurant, I believe in North Reading. They're looking at putting in, looking to put another restaurant up in this area and he saw the building, he likes it. We felt that if he, if he did go in there, I would still have another two thousand feet that I would have to lease. And I felt that the daycare and the hours of operation, things like that, it would be better for the community.
Second that.
My, my gut.
I think the neighbors would, yeah, prefer, if I, I mean, straw poll of the neighbors here? Daycare and gym hours versus restaurant? Just curious.
Yes, we definitely, you know, what's another bar going in across the street? Because nothing's really been a restaurant over there.
Uh, there's another question.
And so, again, I don't want you to mistake my point from earlier. My biggest, I think the ideas are great. Like I said, I've been over there thirty-five years. My biggest concern, again, is like, and he reiterated it, is morning drop-offs and people coming in and out of that plaza. I mean, that, that property needs a good owner and you appear that you're, you're gonna do the right thing. And I thank you. I've seen all these guys come and go. Like I said, the last good tenants that were there were the Giadano's. After that, everybody came in and they wanted to be bar, 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 bar. Most of the neighbors here know what happens, you know, one, two in the morning, they're still blaring music. People leaving the bar. We don't want that. And, and again, you know, my wife is a daycare provider, so I, I know that they're, you know, those are good ideas. But again, that morning, I don't, you live in town, right?
Yes.
Just park up there for a couple mornings between seven and eight-thirty and then you'll understand my concern.
I think it's in the traffic and I also feel like that the, the users that are gonna go there, if we're talking about daycare, CrossFit, everyone that, that's gonna go to these potential new businesses or CrossFit is not a new business, they're moving there. They're already in this community. They're already driving around this town. So to me, it, it might affect it a little bit, but these people might already be driving down from the west side and going to the CrossFit which is up near ninety-five. Now they don't have to drive that far anymore. They're gonna not even go through the center of town. Maybe it'll alleviate a little bit of traffic down where mobile is. I can't answer that, but I understand what you're saying.
I understand.
Traffic, site planning?
Yeah.
Yes, well, traffic is, the site, site plan is, and entrances and egresses and all that. And they do have a lot where you can kind of come in and loop around and come out, which may or may not, you know, might ease people being able to come in and out a little bit.
But uses us and use, use decisions do impact traffic.
That's right, yeah.
On the other hand, I'm always the one who says it's not the business's fault, that the town has the traffic problems that it does and we need to put at the doorstep whose responsibility it is to deal with what thing. Now, of course, improvements to the parking lot and maybe entrance and egress, which would be site planning, perhaps could control that traffic, but, but, yeah, it's, it's a tough one. I live right at the high school and I agree, you can't get out of your driveway.
Well, we can't have a hearing these days without talking about traffic.
Indeed.
Comes up every time. And I think there's.
It's an important part.
There is something to think about. I'm no traffic expert, but there are uses that generate new traffic into town. And then there's uses that, that sort of maybe change slightly traffic patterns that are maybe already in town. Or maybe this pulls additional people into town. Maybe they're already going over to Carlton Drive or, I'm sorry, the current loca, the CrossFit location now is Carlton Drive. Yeah.
Yep.
So maybe they're going all the way there and now they don't have to go as far as the Carlton, I don't know. But, you know, all in all, these are uses that I, I think could be very beneficial, particularly a daycare. I think the CrossFit is a good idea. I think the restaurant is sort of there by right and, and I, I understand, you know, late night noise and not wanting a bar and all that stuff, but the idea of a cafe or something in there, because you can do it by right, to me, would be better than just saying retail. And then, like you said, a CVS goes in or something else that would be, that, you know, and yeah, you can try to control hours. You, you can't do a McDonald's, you're never gonna be a drive-through and all that stuff. You can control it to an extent, but I don't know. I can envision, you know, the use that you have now by, by right as a pre-existing restaurant, if you wanted to continue to do that. I mean, you could. You're asking for a couple of other things that, to me, seem kind of reasonable in this space. Generally granting, you know, business offices, particularly retail stores and services. To me, that, I'd have to get my, really get my mind around that a little bit more as, as far as what that might blow up into down the road. To me, that ends up being just a plaza and I don't, I don't think this is an adequate spot for that. Particularly because all of those uses are prohibited in the district specifically, even though we did actually grant them as a change.
Can I ask a by right, by right question? So if the, if right now it's non-conforming use is a restaurant, does it have to be continuous use? So, so for example, if it's just daycare, CrossFit, right, and that goes in and there's a suspension of when it's a restaurant, what happens? Are they allowed to continue?
Yeah, I'm sure he's gonna.
I was actually going to address that exact point.
Okay.
Right now.
Knock yourself out.
Because I just asked my client if he would be satisfied with the decision that allows him to move forward with the CrossFit and with the daycare. As you've already noted, there is current protections with regard to a restaurant use. What I will say is that, and, and we wanna keep that option at least on the table until we get someone signed up for the lease, to lease out the space. But once there are leases executed to take up the entire building and that it doesn't include a restaurant use, that's an abandonment of the pre-existing non-conforming use and we're stuck then with the leases, with the, the uses that you approved by a special permit.
That's how I was suggesting, the three, the three uses encompassed in a, in a, perhaps, I don't know, if this comes to the board, I'm just throwing that out there.
Also with regards to the CrossFit use, it's not at all uncommon that there is some sort of a little retail section to a gym. They sell merchandise or smoothies or something of that nature. So I would certainly, I mean, I don't know what, what they do at their current location, but that might be helpful, you know, to, to note that in the decision as well. That, that's allowed as part of the use.
So clarifying questions. Isn't it, is it, can I just ask, clarifying counsel?
You had to bring that up.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Two-year abandonment.
The abandonment, are you suggesting that would be part of the condition or you can't?
It, it's automatic.
It's.
Yeah, if we change the use for them, it's, it's changed.
So we'd have to include, include the restaurant.
You don't have to wait two years for it to be abandoned.
Two years, two years.
Well, abandonment can happen instantaneously. So in this instance, you would look at an action that has essentially waived all rights to that use. And when you lease out for a five-year lease, something that doesn't include a restaurant use, you have moved away from it. And that, and so he would be set. But we obviously wanna leave that option open until he gets that lease signed.
Right.
Because we don't want to lose those pre-existing rights and then have either one fall through before we get a lease.
To rephrase that.
I don't think it's fair that we take away his current use either.
Tenless has been closed for two years.
I mean, what, not necessarily, let me, let me rephrase. They're asking us for a special permit for a change in use. If a restaurant is not included in that special permit, then he gets what he gets and now the pre-existing, in a nutshell.
Well, I, well, I guess what I'm trying to suggest is that the special permit isn't really needed for the continuation as a restaurant because we already have those pre-existing non-conforming protections.
But if you're asking to change it, to do something.
We are asking to change, we're asking for the right to be able to change it to one of these other two uses. So if we get a special permit that allows that change, then, then we're happy. And the intent would be to move forward and actually execute lease agreements to take up those spaces. Once that occurs and we actually take the steps necessary to execute those leases, we're essentially giving up that pre-existing non-conforming. So it's not like we're saying your decision would say it's, it's been abandoned.
Right.
It'd, it'd be done through action.
Right, by virtue of executing a special permit.
Correct. Executing a lease.
The lease, yeah, right.
For, for a use that does not include a restaurant, takes up the entire space.
If you never took action on that special permit and somebody came along and wanted a restaurant, then you could actually.
Is tenless, he's been closed for two years?
Yeah, that's right.
Is it already abandoned?
But I, you know, my feeling is, if the board needs to think about what, what we're comfortable with and we can grant them, you know, what we think is reasonable. And I, I would suggest that if we wanna think about, you know, daycare facility, the CrossFit and a restaurant use, package that into a special permit, say, you know, that's it. That carves out some of the things for me that I'm a little concerned about because I don't, I don't have any details on what some of this other stuff could turn into.
And we're fine with that.
And, and I don't know how to necessarily define the restaurant use either, although I guess it would just be general because you've already had it there. But, I mean, I can envision someone going in with a smaller place than, than what's, was attempted to be there. The hours can be restricted if needed.
Well, the thing is, is later.
Picture a cafe or something in there, you know, you work out, you get, get a cup of coffee and a sandwich or something and.
Problem is, it's, it's a, it's a big space, that old, the restaurant. The third tenant that we talked about briefly that wants to open up a restaurant there, he doesn't even wanna take all seven thousand. He wants to take five thousand of it, which is still a big space. I understand a cafe, like you were saying, coffee shop would be nice.
Yeah, it's a little small.
But it's too big, it's too big.
It's too big of a space for that. No, I understand.
And the tenant that, the potential restaurant, they own a restaurant in North Reading, everyone could go by and see it. They do, they, they serve great food. They do serve alcohol and, and beer, but they're more, they're not, they don't have bands or live music that I'm aware of, things of that. It's a restaurant, you go and have dinner and you leave. But again, their hours would be probably till eleven-thirty at night or whatever the town ordinance is. Where the daycare and the CrossFit are generally done, I would think around seven-thirty, eight-thirty at night.
What are the hours for CrossFit, by the way?
Our hours?
Four hours, I know we, we did this before.
We've done this before. We open at five-thirty AM.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, the easy answer is we close by seven-thirty PM at this current moment. I don't see anything changing. We're not open continuously throughout all those hours. Because as Jeff stated, we have classes, so there are like downtimes and dead times that gyms just not open, open. Yeah, so this.
Wait, how many classes you have per day?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
So out of the fourteen hours, what you just said, five-thirty to eight-thirty, he's only really open it's for seven hours where, where people come to work out. And generally, the classes are how big?
Classes can be anywhere from six people to twelve, fourteen.
So you're gonna have literally, and the biggest a class could be if you started signing up?
Biggest, thirty.
So you're gonna have thirty, thirty cars.
But that's one hour.
For that one hour. Six times a day.
Weekend hours?
Our weekend hours are eight-thirty in the morning to about ten-thirty. That's Saturday, Sunday, ten-thirty to twelve. Very light on the weekends.
So do you, do you remember how, how the Dunkin' Donuts.
That's the thing.
Was written? I, I, I think it preceded us, right?
No, I'm trying to understand the constructionally, that's all, like how it was constructed. So Carlton Drive and Dunkin's has come back and asked for changes. And that's certainly his right. If we grant him the three uses today or whenever, he can come back in two years and ask for a different use.
Yeah.
It's not like you can't change it. So I have reservations about retail because I think it's too broad. But the other three I'm comfortable with, just throwing it out there. I agree. Yeah. My gosh. Has that happened?
And I agree with Gina, I don't wanna take away a right.
Paul's noodling, I can smell it.
No, it's fine, it's a no-brainer, except the only, I just wondered if restaurant slash bar and daycare, I just don't, I'm sure that's fine. I'm sure it happens all over America.
I think they'll both occur.
No, they would, it'd be one or the other.
Because the daycare wants seven thousand square feet.
Oh, okay.
I have three potential tenants.
All right.
One being CrossFit.
Yep.
In the five thousand square foot space. The other space is seven thousand feet. That's the space that's always been a restaurant for the past twenty years. The daycare wants all seven thousand feet.
But that's today.
Okay, so.
I mean, you're hopefully gonna stay in this building for twenty years.
So it either will, will either be a restaurant or a daycare.
Correct.
Or it won't be both.
Correct.
Okay.
I thought you only wanted five thousand, so that left you two thousand.
Left me two thousand, so I would have to probably come back for that two thousand feet, but I don't have anyone that wants that two thousand feet right now.
I think we should make it better.
Is there any, was, was there another one, an office space? Is that, was that mentioned in there?
Business.
Retail store.
So business, office.
The retail's not so good, so maybe.
Office space?
I mean, yeah, I don't, we don't really have a problem with that. The only other issue is the signage, which I think would be planning?
Planning, yeah.
Well, they, they have to meet the bylaw.
Right, but it's, it's a pre-existing non-conforming sign. So as long as that sign is not more detrimental, it's just gonna be a determination of the building commissioner.
Right.
Please no neon.
If you keep the.
Yeah, right, of course.
Well, no, they can't have a lit sign.
Well.
If we did, we would get a more.
You say that, but drive around town.
Well, oh, and the windows and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, how many times is Les called Pizza Factory?
So can I, I don't know if this is us or where it would fall, but imagine CrossFit expanding to being conveniently located on a pond. So can I, I don't know if this is us or where it would fall, but imagine CrossFit expanding to being conveniently located on a pond. Um, water, educational activities, whose purview is that? Does it matter? Do we worry about that? I mean, it would be cool, like kayaking, whatever, but like it's public waterway, right?
Yeah.
We're not missing anything, right? It's fine. We don't have to include it, disclude it.
I don't know how their insurance deals was that.
Yeah, I don't think they're gonna be doing anything with water. That's.
That'd be cool if there'd be paddle boarding or whatever.
They're gonna be swimming as part of the wad.
No, like the, the, you know, the balance thing?
Sure.
The boarding.
Paddle boarding.
Wakeboarding? Oh, paddle boarding? The SUP.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Right?
But we don't worry about that, right? Because it's all about the busy season.
They're not gonna, if they, right.
I'm not opposed to it, I'm just kidding.
I think they would figure that out on the side like.
We don't have to, no, no, that's their insurance, not the town's.
Yeah, to answer your question on that, if we were allowed to put CrossFit there, I think Dennis as an owner would have to approach whatever, um,
permissions.
permissions he needs to get for something like that.
I just don't want you to come here and then say, oh, shoot, we didn't ask for that. We have to come back, that's all.
Yeah.
Except for type of use that, I feel different like that. But I'm okay with those three. They don't care.
So on a little bit more of a technical matter, uh.
Me and Jeff agreed.
Ladies, can you hang on a minute? Um, workout facility or, I mean, if we're gonna grant, you know, we're not gonna grant it to a specific franchise.
Work, a workout facility, I think, would, would fall under the definition, yeah.
That's what you're seeking? I just want to make sure we know what it is.
So is that like a use in other towns and we're just slow?
Exercise, workout facility.
Yeah, whatever is a common use in towns that are a little more up to date. I mean, because we have like a recreational, private recreational, major active recreational facility.
Talking about a daycare facility, correct?
Yep.
Be specific.
Did it say it was denied?
And.
A workout.
Guess a restaurant use is what, what we're talking about.
I don't know, just that they want.
Wondering how to craft a motion that captures a specifically, um, your, your application is broader than that, so we're not gonna say per application.
Right.
Uh, we would be, if, if the, you know, it's up for board discussion, but should we grant this? We'd be finding that the requested extension or change in the existing use is not substantially more detrimental to the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood.
Right.
Uh, we'd be making the, the typical special permit findings, granting a special permit for this address under the following conditions, uses would be limited to.
Oh.
Um, and how did you, were you asked for any and all or something like that? Uh, and perhaps you can help us word, word this so that we're on the same.
Combination of any, of any three.
He wrote, uh, change your use for the redevelopment.
Use shall be limited to any one or a combination of exercise, workout facility, daycare or restaurant.
Yep. That sounds good to me.
Want to think about it for a second? I don't know.
No, um.
Is it, get that?
Yeah, what are the, what are the, how are we gonna outline the three uses?
Use shall be limited to any one or a combination of exercise, workout facility, daycare and restaurant.
That was a huge sigh.
Wouldn't the CrossFit be labeled the same as what it's labeled now at its present location? I'm just curious what you, what you consider right now.
Sorry, I don't recall what we.
Private, you, James would.
Private educational use.
So wouldn't it be, if it's the same business, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I, I would.
Well, I mean, other than the fact that we have a very limited use schedule to us.
No, but we're defining it. We're defining that and that's not.
So that's why I think we can call it something different now.
Yeah, now you're getting broad again, so now they move out and you move in anything that you want to consider educational use, you know.
That's why I'm saying, say workout facility.
Yes, right, yes, I agree. I mean, again, it's not that that, whatever you can think of might not be okay too, but it's just.
Would we verse to office space as well or is that?
Where we have.
Yes.
Well, I, yeah, for right now.
Really?
Because they can have.
Just one of those things where everything that we're talking about is specifically prohibited in this location. And, and so understand what's going on, changing a restaurant to something that may work out a little better. We have the right to do it.
As you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, in instances where other uses have, you know, gone through the same process, they at times have to come back and get a different use approved. But we understand that would be the same process here that it did have.
Yeah, okay.
And once the use is established, we'd be, if we wanted to change use, we'd have to come back here too, under the same, under the same bylaw.
Yep.
No, I was worried about.
These are gonna be conditions.
There with us for just a second.
Yep, take your time.
These are gonna be conditions.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. We can do that.
I don't know.
Sorry.
True. I'm just wondering if we should.
Requested.
I don't think she really thought the town placed it. Maybe not.
Quick.
But still. I tore my motorcade.
That's not in here?
Nah, you don't have to.
You're walking too long.
This is, we want this.
No, yeah.
The smoke's coming out of their ears.
Yeah.
I'm gonna throw another wrench in the system.
You asked me first.
Only, only if you agree.
So workout facility, is that too broad? Because what if CrossFit used and then they put.
And I was gonna go to the uses here.
I see it as a potential.
I do see it as a potential.
I do want to be doing that. That would be worse, bigger detriment on the neighborhood than today.
Because if he has these three uses.
I'm gonna do that next time because I could do this quickly.
CrossFit could move into the whole building.
Come in here.
No, I'm not worried about CrossFit. I'm worried about.
Excuse me. Mind if some are gonna take five?
Take up the whole building.
Oh, sure, yes.
Thanks, Sharon. Thanks, Sharon.